Oh, I.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the town of McCandless meeting on town council for November twenty seventh, twenty twenty three. If all of you could join us in the pledge. Thank you. And as we always start these meetings, here's how we conduct them. For those that are new, we'll work together to better our town. We all have an equal voice. We may disagree, but we will do so with civility and respect because in the end we are all neighbors. A few announcements before we get rolling here. First, I saw her pop in. We want to recognize Carolyn Swiger, former Ward Six Council member. For her six years of service. So let me pop up. We have a little back in gift for you, Carolyn.
Yes.
You can take a photo.
I did. Uh, you did. Who is? You're in the middle of moving. We want to have you back. I know the police department, the superintendent, the attorney general, I know all of those bad women. So thank you for caring for the meeting. Yeah, so if you want to say something.
I'll just briefly, um, when I ran the town council, June twenty seventeen. One of the biggest things for me was the SROs and in twenty eighteen, Kim, Zachary, Steve, and all of that together. Started kind of thinking around how this program might work and then at our second session, I remember they had me stand up and I was on the whiteboard writing all the numbers and trying to figure all the logistics out. And seeing that come to Gresham and, you know, years on the road, having the SR program now and I'm with that story. I'm still happy. That was a huge performance for me. And on top of that, the police they had, getting all of our residents, you know, more involved and committed to the town was a huge. Huge part of why I ran because I feel like we need to have as much involvement from our, especially our governor, Simmons, um, within town. So seeing all these things uh together, um, even just down to the light up the festival, going up for the one that's swollen. Uh, another big one was our junior council members. Um, again, that was another dream goal that we wanted and. We have two of them now, um, thirty, so that's great. But, um, yeah, I mean, I, I can't, I can't say, thank you all. You guys were all wonderful. It was, it was fun and we're talking to community and more younger people involved and, um, just keep, keep connecting to our kids and all the community members will just keep pushing forward. So thank you.
Okay, continuing with announcements, uh, like Carolyn said, Winterfest will be held this Saturday from four to seven. Uh, more info on our website, but uh, when's fireworks?
Fireworks should be at six forty five.
When's Santa come?
That depends.
That depends, okay. Alrighty, very good. Then we have a McCandless trivia night coming up, November twenty eighth OTB at seven PM. It's free to play. And a portion of the food and beverages proceeds we donated to McCandless Parks and Rec. And I think all of the trivia is McCandless related trivia.
Yes, that's perfect.
Um, okay, next up, we have a public hearing. Anna, could you?
My pleasure. So I'm not going to call to order the public hearing on tentatively identified ordinance number fifteen forty four. This is an ordinance on budget expenditures. For all funds for twenty twenty four, proposed twenty twenty four budget round funds goes twenty eight million, one hundred fifty five thousand, five hundred thirty four with proposed twenty twenty four tax knowledge rate of one point two three six, which remains unchanged from twenty twenty three. There's a brief presentation and then we will open up before her public comment, followed by council comments.
Good evening, council. Um, I have a brief slideshow just to recap the last two budget workshops as well as to highlight some of the items that we discussed. And to propose some possible changes prior to the vote on in December. This is the twenty twenty four proposed consolidated budget of twenty eight million, one hundred fifty five thousand, five hundred and thirty four dollars. Every year I say it's going to be an even number and it never ends up being it. Um, it is a sixty eight percent general fund, twenty five percent capital projects. We'll receive, we're anticipating state aid of approximately three percent uh for capital projects. Um, and then the others are consistent. Uh, you see that this is the last year for the American Rescue Plan anticipated at a three percent contribution overall. This is that chart in number form. We'll draw back to this at the end of the presentation, but you can see here that the, uh, general fund is anticipated to have nineteen million, one hundred and ninety thousand dollars worth of expenses. And then we are projecting a seven million dollar investment into capital projects. Some highlights that we discussed about the twenty twenty four budget over the last two meetings. There is no property tax mileage increase for the nineteenth consecutive year. We have included training for four new council members. There is an anticipated third party automated payroll service initiative. Succession planning for one administrative position is currently included. Three replacement vehicles and outfitting for the police department, additional police capital equipment costs of thirty eight thousand dollars. A five percent increase in the volunteer fire company contributions, a hundred thousand dollar contribution to the ambulance authority. Increased training and staff development costs. And then DPW capital equipment costs of six hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars spread between the general fund and the CIP fund. This was a slide to show where our money comes from for the general fund. Again, our general fund is the general operating fund of the town. Thirty nine percent of our income is earned from earned income tax, nineteen percent is real estate tax. And then realty transfer and business privilege tax equates to about eight percent. Local funding's at five. There's additional state funding for the general fund at five percent as well, and then a sprinkling of other sources. Where the money is anticipated to go for the general fund in twenty twenty four, uh, consistent with prior years, public safety is at about forty six percent. Public works is at twenty three percent. There is an increase to transfers to other funds related to the increase of seven million dollars for the capital improvements program fund. The transfer to other funds is at thirteen percent. That is the significant contribution from the general fund of over two million dollars from their fund balance. We reviewed the capital improvements program fund. It's broken out in between general government, which is majority of that funding at eight hundred and forty five thousand dollars for twenty twenty four is to complete the HVAC program and the windows here in town hall. The public work section of this capital improvement project budget includes part of that equipment that we talked about earlier has the contribution to Department of Public Works. There's an anticipated additional purchase order for a ten ton dump truck as well as a pickup truck, a chipper, an excavator. And the plow and spreader associated with the ten ton truck. Um, we anticipate completing signal upgrades. We have received multiple grants from the state. Um, Arley and Greenlight Go in anticipation of, um, component upgrades as well as, uh, full intersections. That program will begin in twenty four and complete in twenty five. Stormwater improvements, the, um, annual piece that comes in place with the road program at half a million. Um, the culvert at Winchester, which will be done in-house. Um, construction completion of the Blazer number one culvert and the beginning of the Oak Ridge Culvert construction. The road program is again budgeted at one point two five million. And then we have MS four and stormwater flood control programs of about three hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars. The parks, we have a, um, drainage improvement at Wall and Vestal of a hundred and sixty five. We have playground replacements at eighty four and fifty two thousand dollars apiece. And thirty thousand dollars for cameras. I'm reading these numbers off because I know not everyone can see them in the back. I apologize. I also had presentation materials up front. This is the screen you're all waiting for. These are some possible additions and deletions to the budget that we've discussed over the course of the two by twos that we had with council members. Once we, uh, re-release the budget as well as the two budget workshops, um, and this is kind of a group of list of items that have been raised. Um, an increase of ten thousand dollars to the capital contribution for the ambulance authority, a reduction in the heritage cultural center expenditures. Volunteer fire department. Contribution for equipment. Um, this amount could be anywhere from nine thousand to nineteen thousand dollars. Miscellaneous line items related to volunteer appreciation dinner. That would be the addition of the spouses, staff development. And, um, expected retirements. We have another retirement that was, um, brought to our attention at the release of the first budget, after the release of the first budget. Um, those item amounts are there respectively. The CIP program, there is a request to relieve, I'm sorry, to reduce the concession stand expenditure at Wal Park in twenty twenty five. That will not affect the twenty twenty four CIP budget or the total budget. And then also the amounts in the line items for the PRP. We anticipate moving some of that money into the retention detention pond line item. So this year it'll be a swap. We're anticipating the three hundred and eight thousand that you saw in the stormwater number. Um, being reduced by about thirty thousand dollars and moved into the detention ponds. And then twenty twenty five, twenty six, and twenty seven, there's an anticipated, um, addition of fifty thousand, seventy thousand, and ninety thousand dollars respectively. Um, as the town takes over those programs, we'll need more money, um, to facilitate that process. Did I get that right, Jason? So as, um, as we further discuss that this evening, these are the items up for discussion. Um, these items that you see on the screen are roughly sixty thousand dollars. If they're all put into place, um. If they go back and forth, it's a matter of just tallying them up. In either case. The number that you see here, I don't know if you can see my cursor, this contributions from prior year fund balance number for the general fund will increase if those amounts are increased. Because they'll have to be funded either through, um, it's really the only comfortable way to fund those going into next year. Um, overall, like I said, mentioned, there's roughly, um. Looks like fifty to sixty thousand dollar adjustment to the general fund. So, um, not material or need to re-advertise. But it is something to discuss and iron out this evening. Um, and then it would be added to the motion as part of passing of the budget next meeting. So it'll be. Motion to adopt the twenty twenty four consolidated budget as presented with the following additions or deletions. Is that, did I get that right, Anna? So is there any questions or comments related to these items? I have additional information, as does Brian. Um, we're happy to address those now prior to opening it up for public comment.
Is it our turn to ask a question?
Certainly, that's fine.
Um, the concession stand, is that meant to raise revenue or is that meant to provide an amenity?
Uh, as my understanding is it would provide an entity that would be mostly used by the Ingamar Franklin Park Little League Association.
For them to make.
Ingamar Franklin Park Baseball Softball Little League Association.
Do they want to break even on it or do they want to make money that then would fund the Little League?
I believe that the benefit would be that they make some profit on that and additionally to offer food during long Saturdays and Sundays when there's events going on or nights when there's other. People that are there that are watching kids play.
When we vote, would it be, we would go line in by line into the additions and so, uh, how would that look?
I would like to iron that out a little bit further this evening as there are six items on this list. Um, so that we can propose the wordage for y'all, the language for you to, um, potentially adopt next meeting.
I, I would suggest that first of all, before any action is taken on those decisions, provide some opportunity for public comment on that item. And then you can open up discussion and determine which ones require a full vote. Which ones there's a consensus among council and try to streamline things, or you can certainly go one by one and make it as clear as possible.
At the next meeting.
At the next meeting, you will need to vote if you'd like.
Yeah, and then there'll be line items at the next meeting.
Yes.
That they were voted on tonight.
Okay.
I do know that the last time we did this, there was some discussion during the meeting where we had the vote. At that point, there were three to four items that we had that weren't a good, you know, that were. Added to the verbiage subtract, you know, some of them didn't pass. We re. Revoted, et cetera. So. I'm going to step aside and let the public comment if y'all have any more questions. Okay.
Does anybody have any public comments on the budget presentation? Please just step right up to the microphone, state inside your name and what your address is.
Um, Ellen Wright, nine, six, three, five, Old Coomer Road, Allison Park, PA, one, five, one, oh, one. Um, I have a couple of comments about the process. Um, I didn't see the public hearing posted for this on the town websites. Um, the document that I have and I also, I have the document from the October twenty third workshop meeting. I don't have tonight's, um. The document that you're looking at, but I noticed that neither one has page numbers. Um, and then the specifics from the October twenty third document. I had questions or comments about the town council section four hundred. And I was kind of curious why the professional services that the actual is eleven thousand and then the amended is seventy two thousand. And then the projected is sixteen and then next year it's seventy three, nine thousand. Just seems like a lot of. Changes between the actual and the proposed and the actual and proposed. And I'm also seeing the same thing, a similar, well, I'm seeing an increase, um, on town council four hundred, number four. Uh, sixty, the meetings and conferences that the actual is five thousand, then it goes to the amended budget is nineteen thousand. Then the projected actual is fifteen thousand and then next year it's twenty two thousand. So I'm kind of curious. What, what those numbers represent and why there's those change, why there are those changes. Um. And then if I look at planning and zoning, I'm kind of curious about planning and zoning is listed as four fourteen. And then I believe the subheading is three ten, that the actual is a hundred thousand, but the amended is sixty seven. And then the projected for this year is, um, the actual for twenty 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 two was a hundred. And then the pro- projected actual is sixty one and then the proposed is fifty seven. So I'm just kind of curious why those numbers are. Kind of, there's great changes in the numbers. And then, um, also under planning and zoning for the, which is four fourteen, I believe. And then four hundred under meetings and conferences that that number in twenty. Uh, projected actual is, um, fifteen hundred and then the proposed is fifty two hundred. So those are my comments about looking at the document from twenty twenty three. And, um, I don't know how it aligns to tonight's document. Thank you.
Any other public comments on the budget?
Hi, good evening, Marsha Caliendo, one oh five two nine Abbey Lane. Um, I'm obviously here to talk about the contribution for the McCandless Franklin Park Ambulance Association. I have seen that you have, uh, a suggested amount of increasing it by ten thousand dollars. Um, as I stated two weeks ago, uh, we, our request was a hundred and sixty one thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars. Which was based on our, uh, operating and capital budgets, uh, plus. Using some of our expenses and we had a total deficit of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of which we allocated that across our five municipalities. That works out again to under fourteen dollars a household. And, um. I made a mistake. I thought it was point eight five percent of your budget, but it's really point five eight percent of your budget, less than, little less than half of a percent of your total budget. To fund the ambulance authority so that we can continue to get to your house within six minutes. When there is a true emergency. I, I don't think that's really asking a lot. It is incumbent upon you as elected officials. To provide ambulance, police. And fire services. So. I again want to let everyone know that the two hundred and fifty three thousand that you said you've given us the past three years has not because we paid you back for that. So other than the rad money of which we were hap- always happy to get. We've not gotten anything from McCandless, a hundred and sixty one thousand, less than fourteen dollars per household is what we need to continue to provide care. And I would ask that you would find it. To give us that remaining fifty thousand dollars. You know? No one wants to talk about the elephant in the room and everyone prides himself on the fact that we've gone nineteen years without a tax increase. That's great. I'm very happy as a resident here for thirty years. I'm pleased that we don't raise taxes and but we need to think hard about, is it now time? For a tax increase so that you can fund the ambulance so that we can fund all of our stormwater management so that we can fund the ambulance. I don't want to die in a fire. I don't want to die of a heart attack because they can't get to me. So they'll put on my tombstone. I lived in a community that didn't raise taxes for nineteen years. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Joe Wall. I live in seventy five, Arcadia Drive. I'm also the chair of the FTPC. I understand that choices have to be made in every budget negotiation. To that end. I would like to offer even something more to council than the reduction of four thousand dollars. What I would like to do is to make an agreement with town council. That you can take up to seventy five hundred. From the FTPC, provided we don't have to split fifty fifty with the monies that are raised coming in the door. It's up to you. Thank you.
Anybody else? Someone? All right. Well, now to conclude, public comments on budget presentation, open it up for further discussion with the council.
Okay, we have to get someone pull up the list of the, the six things or. I was first going to say. Is it, so we could either go one by one or one option is. I agree with all six of these. Let's do it or I disagree with all six of these. Is it, is, can anyone?
I prefer to go one by one.
One by one, one by one, okay. Very good. We'll go backwards. So Trish, you want to explain six thus rope?
Well, I can, and I can talk on it too. In that sense, uh, number six, um, in our capital improvement. Uh, Brad, capital improvement fund, we have a line item for town owned retention detention ponds. Uh, we've kind of put a thirty thousand dollar number on that for a long time. Um, seeing what some of our pollution reduction projects have come in on for stream bank restorations. And where we've had numbers there. I'm just trying to adjust those line items to put a little bit more towards the storm water detention and retention ponds. I also would say we do spend other money from the general fund on those. Things, so it's not just thirty thousand dollars. It's not going to just be fifty thousand dollars, but I just wanted to make a little adjustment for the improvements where. Our public works has done a lot in-house and been able to do more. And I think we're going to be able to do more going forward for those, um, ponds to update them to proper. Uh, facilities as they've aged.
So you're just moving money from two different counts.
Yeah, so I'm just basically taking the, the pollution reduction project line and moving twenty thousand up to that and then next year doing the same. To up that amount that we're spending on retention and detention months.
So just moving.
Yeah, so no net change of, of the budget ending. I'm just changing a line item to better address how we probably will spend it.
Can everyone accept that?
Okay.
We can do head nods.
You can do head nods.
Okay. Yes. Head nods and thumbs. Okay, we got through one of them. Uh, concession stand expenditure at Wal Park, uh, that would be in the twenty five budget or the twenty four? So the.
Of that, she's been in concession stand is the hundred and sixty.
Yeah. Okay, any thoughts from my left ear?
Um, I am curious if, if we grant this. Um, and provide this as a resource for the Little League Association. Are we also going to be ready to give it to the soccer association, the cross country groups, the every other possible group? Who have children and sports in our community who would love the advantage of being able to sell candy bars and hot dogs on Saturday afternoon. Will they be given that same opportunity?
Other of you, any comments?
I think we could use the money elsewhere. That's just how I feel.
Okay. Don, anything? I wonder. Anyone down there?
I think we should use the money elsewhere as well. I'm not sure. It said it's Franklin Park Ingamar Little League, right?
Right, that is the name of the organization. They do have a lot of.
McCandless kids. But what is Franklin Park contributing?
Nothing to this because they also use Franklin Park's facilities for some, for the Blueberry Park is, is, uh, something else they use.
I think we've heard quite a few more worthwhile projects at this point.
Jack, Jason, any, I do have an opinion.
Yeah, clearly council needs to get in their car and drive around. Maybe go to Pine, go to Hampton, go to Franklin Park, go to Marshall and look at their facilities. They have Taj Mahals. We have crap. I mean. These should be our crown jewels because these are our kids that are coming up through these organizations. There's eight hundred some kids in IFPLL. And a lot of times parents have to fly home from work and they're hungry. There is nothing down by wall, nothing, no convenience store, you know, so there's, they're out of luck. So I just counsel, uh, counsel that there's more to it than just putting a concession stand to make money for the Little League. And it's something that will last for decades. It's not something that's going to last for one budget year. And that's my two cents.
Yeah, I thought one or another. No. Okay. Um, I, I personally don't see how it would. Turn a profit in order to invest back in whatever youth sports that we, um, would want to invest in or however it's, I, I just don't see, you know. Getting a couple hundred thousand dollars in profit over the first couple of years to even start paying for that. So I'm sort of, I'm sort of against that.
Here, I have one more question. Do we have like a cost breakdown of this? I mean, we got a random hundred and sixty thousand and another hundred and some thousand the following year to finish this. Where's the?
The, so the two, the total number of two hundred seventy six includes, uh, pickleball conversion. Um, to the tennis courts down there. I think the also possibly the resurfacing of the, um. Either the pickleball and or the basketball deck hockey courts.
Hundred and sixteen goes to the four convertons and a hundred and sixty goes to the concession stand.
Okay, but I'm still curious as to the breakdown. Like, how much does, how much does it cost a hundred and sixty thousand for the concession stand? How does that break down construction wise? Who's building it? Where are they getting the lumber? I mean, we have no breakdown on this. I don't disagree that our kids deserve the best. That I would agree with, but. I'm not sure concession stand to the tune of a hundred and sixty thousand is the best use of our funds. I mean, like.
Part of that is storage facilities for the Department of Public Works. Keep some stuff down there too.
Where do they keep it now?
Uh, I don't know.
I, I'd like to see more information. I don't think this is detailed enough to, to put it in at this point.
Do we have the option to move it a couple of years ahead of that? Is that a? And that just provides a, a future placeholder for that money, but in the meantime, it could be designed, it could be researched, it could be budgeted. We could figure out the. You know, the funding stuff, we can do a. you know, the funding stuff. We can do a pro forma to see if we would make money or.
May I, a question, uh, from what I was understanding, this, the the revenue from this concession stand was going directly to the baseball department. It was never coming back to the town. Is that correct?
Okay.
So there was, this is just a, this is a gift to families who play baseball and softball.
That's even a bigger one. Like, is it better just stroke them a check for two seventy-six or what? No, wait, one sixty?
One sixty.
Yeah, I mean, seriously, it's gonna take them for each seasons to make a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in selling hot dogs.
I don't think that was the intention to get any money back from the organization. I think it was to provide an improvement to that park that's owned by the town.
And I think the organization would gladly chip in, and I think there's other ways we can garner money.
That was my next point. Anytime an organization is asking for something like this, or if they ask or not that we're going to provide it, I want to see their contribution. I always think there should be a match.
Yeah.
So like public-private partnership.
Yeah, I think it will end up being that.
Okay. No change. We're good with all those. Yeah, I'm I'm good with that too. So now we're on number three. Fire department. What what totals the nine and the nineteen? What other?
So the fire department provided us um two items that they would still like to receive uh contributions from the town on a spreader and then some burnt blades. And it was proposed that we do one of the other.
I think I might have a question for um. I I was asked about this and I thought we had talked about doing a match for this or possibly just buying one piece of equipment. I wasn't sure what expectations or conversations might have been with council members and anyone from the fire departments about this shared piece of equipment.
That's right.
So it was a a fifty-fifty for the whole thing, or was it, we bought one piece of equipment?
It's sort of the same thing.
It's pretty close. Yeah, that's why we had the, the first one we threw out there was seventeen thousand, nineteen thousand, because it's about the same either way. Um, that would be a piece of rescue equipment because it's essentially the the old version of the jaws of life, as I understand it. Um, and currently Peoples and Inglemire are to rescue um services in in the town with our fire departments. Uh, the nine thousand was talking about the suggestion of fuel and looking at what um the increase would be if we went down that path. So that was why we threw that number out there, just to show uh where we would be on that.
In an offline discussion, no, Brent, um, there's a good point made that uh fuel fluctuates. So it's really tough to budget because if it's three dollars and twenty-seven cents and then it's five dollars, that makes a big difference. So there'd have to be kind of a cap on that. So the the equipment, I think, would make them abundantly satisfied. And I believe it was seventeen-five was the number. That's what I recall. So I, of course, have the firefighters and I'm of course supporting that.
So what are we agreeing to? Nine thousand is the fuel or what was the breakdown?
Actually fifty percent of one of the items. The fuel is closer to twenty thousand.
I'm sorry, misunderstood that. No.
I'm asking for seventeen-five, which is half of the two pieces of equipment needed.
So then what's the nine for, what's it, a spreader?
Initially, so the nine thousand is the nineteen thousand dollars divided by two roughly. And then for the jaw of life spreader items.
But Mike, you need two pieces of equipment to make this work and they total by thirty-four, thirty-five thousand dollars, the two pieces. So we would agree to pay for half of that total of two. I don't know what the nine thousand is, to be honest with you.
Half the spread.
Okay.
Which department set forth?
It would be purchased by cables, but it could be used by operating.
That's good that it's used. Okay. Where do I start? We'll start down.
I guess I have a question about it. Um, if we were to provide half the funding for both of these pieces of equipment, where would the other funding come from? Do they have the resource? Would that come out of the equipment fund that the uh?
I believe they have it, is my understanding. That they would pay.
Because I hate to give the money and have it sit there for two years while they're raising money for it.
They have a number of sources. Not only do they have the hundred and seventy-nine thousand, the council reported to each agency, but also they have money in front of the volunteer fire relief association that they could draw down from.
Okay.
Um, or their officers.
Thank you. I I would be in support of funding for half. I'm also in support of.
Just to comment on a couple of things. I'm I'm not for fuel. I think a variable expense like that is hard to budget for. I would not be creating that. Um, I'm fine with supporting the the half of the two pieces as long as they are shareable between the departments.
They're battery operated. So today they have to use hydraulics. So this particular unit goes downhill sides and extracts people, what have you. So it really benefits them in a very unique way because now they can carry it down without having to worry about cables and what have you. So I'm I'm for it.
For both, also the fuel?
No, 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 just the equipment. It's, and also I I think it's important to point out that they did get a very distinguished award this year from the state of Pennsylvania. And this is kind of a, an appreciation thought as well.
I think that, yeah.
I'm I'm definitely for it. I think that was a a a good thing to ask for that could be shared rather than just asking for cash. And they do have the matching funds, which is abundantly important, I think.
Yeah, I like the, what Jack's point was of, it's a thank you for being such a great asset as well. Does that get you the answer you need? Okay. Heritage. Uh, the adjustment will be forty-four hundred or what Mr. Wall said would be what, seventy-five hundred?
Well, I mean, in the concept of how the the fifty-fifty contribution works, we've never raised enough cash to cover costs over there. So we really don't have, we've never brought in the money to sit in the capital fund account because we've never brought in enough revenue to cover the cost of the event. So that's always supposed to cover the nineteen thousand dollars in cost, nineteen, twenty thousand dollars in cost that we have for the facility, utilities and just the regular operation of keeping lights on at the end of the day. Um, so this was after multiple council members, we talked about the revenue that has come in for the FTPC and the HCC this past year. Um, and talked about uh the request that was asking for um more than this, but um trying to keep that flat based on what the revenue that's brought in is what has been relayed to me. Okay. Where I started last, what are your?
Um, I kind of like the seventy-five hundred dollar decrease and then do a seventy-five, twenty-five split. They can keep seventy-five of what they raise, we get twenty-five.
Don't, it was that, but if we keep like, it's it's still McCandless at the end of the day.
Right, I know.
So that's why, because it's not, because if if they bring in more money, they don't get to spend it that year.
But they, we get to spend it the following year. Is that right? But they'd have to bring in over and above the operating plus, correct?
Yes.
Right now, they're, right now, they're not. They haven't seen, they were supposed to raise forty-nine thousand dollars this year. We're not there. And their budget currently is twenty-nine thousand dollars. So we're still in the red. And so as long as we're in the red, we don't split that to make the capital contribution. So the town's general fund is funding the Heritage Cultural Center to take seventy-five hundred dollars off. You're just reducing his budget and if he does make, if the, you think it does make more, I'm sorry, the Heritage Cultural Center makes more money. We have yet to put any money into the capital contribution fund. So it's still at zero for that.
So it's a chance. It would be like rolling the dice. Okay.
Have we amortized everything? For roofs and siding and painting, everything?
There's no, there's no, the the building was built in two thousand and sixteen. And so most of that equipment, right now, we're worried about maybe the HVAC or the water heater. Um, but this time it's still a relatively building, but we're hoping to build that capital reserve so that there's money in five pounds.
The reason for my questions, are we reserving enough? Are we reserving too much?
We have, we have not brought in enough revenue to make that reserve. Is there an outside, is there any reserve at all right now in the reserve account? You know, because we've never brought in more than we started. So right now it is zero.
Yes. So, Jack, did you, who had?
Anything I'll pass to Jason?
I I'm just, you know, I I don't know where I'm at with this. I think I need to understand it better. I'm a little hesitant on changing with the split right now. Um, I'm hesitant on we're pulling forty-four hundred dollars when we have a, it seems like an organization that needs money. Um, you know, from what I'm hearing is we're constantly losing money and now we're going to pull forty-four hundred. I'm just confused where we're going with it, I guess.
This still gives a three percent increase over the twenty-twenty-three's budget. And there was, I believe there was a thousand or two thousand dollars additional in operating supplies for events or for items that they needed the heritage and fossil center.
So what does this pull the forty-four ten?
This is the request that was presented by the FTPC. We pulled forty-four ten back and only gave a three percent increase versus the twenty-nine percent increase that was originally budgeted.
Were we specifically hitting them on their budget with this forty-four ten?
The two things that were asked for were a shelving system and a laptop, which we purchased the laptop this year.
Okay.
Um, there was, they also asked for consulting, which is not in my proposed budget.
Okay.
That's really pretty much most of it.
Okay, and then I'm fine with that as it is.
So.
As you have amended for the shelving system, I understand we can wait. If they already had, and the consultant, we can hold. I'm fine with pulling minus forty-four ten.
Okay, you're you're, okay, you're good.
Yes, I'm good with that.
Okay. Any thoughts?
Well, I'm fine with this, but I would like to see them start raising the money so that they can be self-sufficient. And we could do that split.
Yeah, I I think that needs explored.
I think that that's a good idea. I just would like to see the revenue be there so that we could start putting money where it needs to be to show that it can work. But right now I'm fine with this, but futuristic league, it's something that needs to be taken with that.
For clarity, this would be to reduce it by the forty-four ten.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Agree with the adjustment and also recommend it. It might actually be able to apply for rad money for that facility. Independently.
Trish.
Um, I agree. I don't think we can have discussion on on changing the split until the the capital funds or that fund is built up, uh, or at least they're making covering costs to the town for operations, et cetera. I don't think we can have that discussion at all until that happens.
So.
So I am in agreement as written.
Okay, so yeah, okay, so it seems like that's that's a consensus. So we will yeah, agree with that forty-one hundred dollar deduction. Forty-four. Oh, forty-four ten, yes. And last, MFPAA. Um, I don't know where I started. So we're going from zero. Hundred thousand. We do a some in kind.
Two things that we do that are in kind. One, one, one thing that we do do is we do uh there, we plow their snow in the winter. We do their landscaping. That is in kind, no cash contribution. Uh, we also offer them discounted cat gas and diesel. Um, they pay it through us. So we do get reimbursed that for that. So there's no money out. And we also offer them discounted um mechanic services and discounted parts through our purchasing. So by joint purchasing, we save the money, um, but there's no cash on it. So there's there's savings there, but not a contribution by our part outside of uh labor. Um, that is uh yeah, for the landscaping and and such related to that. Uh, we also last year gave them, as was alluded to, I believe, sixteen thousand dollar, uh, the the money that we get from the sales tax in Allegheny County. There's a piece of that that usually calculates that we have to give it to a joint um multi-ministerial authority. And last year we decided to give all of it to the ambulance authority. Previously, we had split it with the library.
Yeah, and that's not in our budget. That's it.
That, yeah, that's, that's a decision when we get that revenue, what to do with it. And this year, we uh, after discussions with all the other municipalities that are involved, um, there's been a lot of moving parts about this. Uh, how do we change possible governance? Right now only Franklin Park and McCandless sits on the board. Uh, but the MFPA serves uh Bradford Woods, Pine Township and Marsh Township. And uh through those conversations and some of the things that we've done with the ambulance authority, we've gotten to a place that uh, I believe um, all five municipalities are going to give some sort of cash contribution where previously uh, as a cash contribution in their budget, Franklin Park was the only one that has done it previously.
Okay. Start down here.
Uh, I think everyone here knows how I feel. I think the full amount should be awarded. Um, this is a group that has, you know, in the past, the council's been extremely critical of the MFPAA um for past management, past accounting practices. And there has been a night and day change um in the past two years. And I think we as council should acknowledge that. Um, I also believe that we are going to be looking at some serious consequence if we do not support our ambulance authority and support them at the full need. Starting now, we will be sooner than later looking at something like what Ross Township had to do and charge each of their households fifty dollars. Right now, the ask is less than fourteen dollars. And I don't know if everyone here on council is ready to tell their neighbors, I was not willing to spend fourteen dollars on your house for an ambulance to come.
Kathy Dawn, any thoughts?
I, I'm in agreement with Trish. I just simply find it hard to believe that this is probably one of the crucial things we could possibly have in our township. I'm disappointed that other municipalities not contribute to it. Now, I understand they're going to do a little bit this year. But it it's heartbreaking. I think that uh Chris was inherited a problem, major problem. I think they're trying to correct it. But in the meantime, they still have an issue to deal with. But in the meantime, they still have an issue they have to deal with. I think futuristically, they start, need to start thinking about some fundraising, some serious fundraising. Um, because that's the only way you're gonna be able to keep keep the ambulance authority going forward. Uh, but I am in favor of 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 giving them.
The extra times. Jason.
You know, I think watching this the last two years and watching it even longer than that, um, you know, us going from zero to a hundred thousand or possibly even a hundred and ten is a, is a big um, adjustment for us, much like the ambulance authority has done in the last two years, they've improved dramatically. Do I think they can improve more? Sure. Do I think we can improve more over time? Sure. I think a hundred thousand dollars or possibly a hundred and ten is a good first start for both of us.
You're supportive of either.
Yeah, I I'd be good for a hundred or a hundred and ten.
Yeah. Okay.
My sentiments exactly, Jason. First off, I'd like to say hats off to the MFPAA Board and Chief Dell for turning their authority around in the last eighteen months. I think they did a remarkable job. They're also a five oh one C three and they have the ability to raise money. Our Department of Public Works, they rely a hundred percent on us. So if we take money out of Public Works, for instance, the leaf truck, we have two vacuum trucks and we have a vacuum truck that has two tow behinds. That requires four people. If that breaks down because it's antiquated, because we've gone into deferred maintenance, what happens is we've got four people sitting there, or we have a mechanic working on it. So we have to fund our public works department. We do not have to fund the MFPAA for a hundred percent of their ask because they have capability of going above and beyond where they're where we fund them. Uh, I'd love to be able to give them a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars, but it has to come from somewhere. So I'm in support of a hundred and ten thousand. I think that's a pretty good cap compromise. We're going from zero. Zero, we're not going from a hundred to a hundred and ten, going from zero to a hundred and ten. So I think that's a pretty good stretch for us. Um, there's an organization called Charity Navigator. And if we can get the MFPAA on the Charity Navigator, which requires certain amount of thresholds to to meet, that that threshold allows them to get their name thrown in the hat so that all these big banks that have millionaires and billionaires in- involved, they they get the list of everybody that's a qualified candidate. That means that they're that they've been vetted as a really good place for rich people to give money. If we get them on that list, I think we improve our chances of succeeding and helping them uh, get additional money going forward and hopefully we can reduce how much we have to pay.
I I have to agree with that. I um, I think to go from zero to a hundred and sixty-one is a hundred and sixty-one percent increase. That's really a lot. I don't disagree that it is a very, very valuable service. I mean, it is such a valuable service. I mean, I've subscribed since I moved in here. Uh, but I do think a hundred and ten is more reasonable to start with, cause I do think the other municipalities need to pay their fair share on some kind of formula. I also think a nonprofit does have the capability of getting matching funds. I think this is about the fourth time I said this tonight about matching funds. Um, one thing I would probably suggest doing is stop calling these things the things that go to the home subscriptions because you see the word subscription, you think it's a magazine and you toss it. I mean, it needs to be put out there as members or with what it does for you and, you know. I'm going off council, I'm more than willing to help with fundraising. It's my favorite thing to do. I mean, I do think that the ambulance authority could raise matching funds. And I would propose that if they raise even an extra thirty thousand this year, we match that thirty thousand and take them to one forty next year. Or some, you know, some incentive to get more fundraising from the community. I don't, I honestly don't think people understand what a subscription is. I don't. I mean, I ask my neighbors, they they don't even know what I'm talking about, half of them. So I'm I'm with the one-ten for now.
Agreed, needs to be remarketed. We're all supportive of the one-ten.
Um, may I, please? Um, I'm just, the, you know, I'm only gonna bring it up because Mr. Casey brought it up first. There is nothing that we as a town says from any municipality, any state or federal organization that says we need to pick up leaves. Nothing. It is a luxury for the residents of McCandless. An absolute luxury that we don't have to bag our leaves. So I really have a hard time comparing saving someone's life with me having less work to do on Saturday afternoon. I take offense to that. I would rather someone come to save someone I loved than to have leaves picked up at my yard.
That's a perfect example. Once you start funding something, you can't back down. So if we start at one sixty-one, next year it's a hundred and sixty.
We're talking lives, we're talking leaves.
We're not gonna let them, we're not gonna let them fail.
And that, that was another caveat I I wanted to suggest. If if in six months, they're still in really dire straits before any services are cut, uh, a board meeting is, or a council meeting is reheld and it's revisited. I mean, I think that's only, we can't wait a year. If they're gonna go downhill over the year because we shorted them fifty thousand dollars of what they wanted, then I would say you need to revisit it. I don't know how you put that anywhere, but.
Yeah, you just have to be brought up with.
Just a suggestion.
Hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars, I'm not real comfortable with how they identified the ask. Okay, you talk about, you know, the concession stand and and that's not outlined. This was outlined, but it wasn't a very deep outline. It was just in generalities. So I think that that could be improved for next year as well.
I think you saw the presentation, it was a lot more, I, you know.
I have it with me.
Yeah, it wasn't just we, we want, we want the money.
Uh, they've improved and they went from zero to a hundred and ten.
And and they've also done a lot of work, uh, miss, to respond to Miss Eisenreich, they, the amount of grants they've been applying for and receiving has increased a hundredfold as well in terms of getting more, seeking more funding sources, et cetera. Um, I think I have seen a difference in the subscription, the flyer that comes, I agree, it needs to be a better idea. Another uh, one of the things I haven't proposed because it was coming from MFPAA to the residents of Pine, Marshall and Bradford Woods. I asked that next time we get, they get the actual envelopes from the township of Pine and put it in there so that they realize that it's, this is from Pine, this is part of our community. So it's maybe those residents start giving more. Right now, we're at less than twenty percent response on the subscriptions. The people of McCandless don't realize what it is. Everyone I've ever spoken to, if I bring this up, they say, but doesn't the town fund it? They are been assuming that the town has been funding it all these years. The assumption has been, just like the police protection that we all value and we love here in the town of McCandless and the fire protection. I would say nine out of ten residents you talk to in this town think we already fund McCandless, Franklin Party Ambulance Authority. And I just, again, I'm going to ask you, whenever they find out that you didn't fund, are you okay with telling them your family is not worth fourteen dollars a year?
And and just a real quick follow-up on that, you know, we, we're proposing additional funding. But I remind everyone on council, we also have a police negotiation contract this year where we have the same exact thing for public safety. And we went to a contract negotiation because we had to choose what we would fund those police and what we wouldn't for the same public safety issue. This is something we're tasked with this council. We cannot write blank checks. We have to properly identify whether it's for ambulance, fire or police. There are certain areas where we can't write blank checks. And I agree that with, you know, we're going from one to a hundred and ten with the ambulance. We're in contract negotiations with our police, we're arguing about it over fire. I wish we could write it for everyone, all that they ask. But at some point, we have to pick a number and get started. And I say, I share the same sentiment. At no point will anyone in this council let that ambulance authority fail.
I think it's incumbent upon the town to work with them, to help them raise the money. All the municipalities that are involved need to step up and do what they can to help. I was looking at our report for our communications. It's rather anemic as to how many people we reach with that. But if we can improve our reach, maybe we can improve our donations. I think we can close that gap through donations. And I'm, I'm happy to work with the MFPAA to help raise that money.
And and just put, you know, uh, this is a bigger picture than a McCandless issue, right? This is, uh, the, the insurance companies don't cover the cost of an ambulance. Um, this is been a problem, but a bigger problem in the last five, ten years where uh, organizations, municipalities haven't had to put money into ambulance authorities. They've been able to have nonprofits run them, five oh one C threes authorities, even for-profit companies. And and so, uh, you know, this is the realization of what we're getting to of just the total picture of EMS in in the the country and particularly Western Bay and Spanish. So, um, understand, I think I I just wanna mention how much things have changed in five, ten years with EMS service. And why, why we're even here talking about this? Cause ten years ago, we would have said, no, this isn't our problem. At all, so.
But it is our problem. And, you know, I I see we're split here. But I'm thinking, why can't we just make another ten thousand dollars above that ten? Giving a hundred and twenty thousand is gonna be a lot better than just giving them a hundred or a hundred and ten. I, I mean, throw in another ten thousand, it's a hundred and twenty thousand. At least we can all come to some kind of agreement compromise, rather than we split down the middle. We know that we have to help them. We know that they're in dire straits. We know we wanna preserve our ambulance authority. So the decision we make tonight is a decision that's gonna move forward. And if we just go with a hundred and ten thousand and they're stuck, oh yeah, we're not gonna let them fail. That's easy to say. But right now, we have to help with the problem.
I can agree with that. I could definitely agree with a hundred and twenty. If that's gonna really help, I hope it will. But I can definitely agree with that. Since we pushed the concession stand down the road, I'm, I'm okay with a hundred and twenty.
So the the item on the table was, would we be willing to go to one-ten? And I think I heard with pretty much consensus, we, we all are because of the state they're in and because of the great work they do. I think we have another point is who's up here willing to go over the one-ten? And who's okay with the one-ten? So.
I'm again, not real comfortable with how they ask. I mean, they did a much better job asking for the money. But if you look at it, a- and how they talk about garage doors and floors and this and that and what have you. Um, I I still think we can close the gap through fundraising. I don't necessarily think we have to give them everything on the wish list.
Yeah. So let's see that.
And I don't think we are, I don't think we are, if we go to a hundred and twenty.
You comfortable one-ten or you wanna revisit it?
I'm comfortable with one-ten or one-twenty. I'll go with that already.
One-ten.
One-ten.
One-ten of a visit.
One-twenty.
One-ten.
One-twenty.
Uh, I'm gonna go one-ten. Uh, if, if they, if there was no ask and we had a big check made and we went over to see the McCandless Authority, go, here you go, for all the great work you did, a hundred, a hundred and ten thousand dollars, they would be ecstatic. Uh, so like, I think it's to Jack's point, it's, we're at zero now, now it's going one-ten.
Mister Charles, like getting a card saying you're the best mom on Mother's Day. I would rather weekend away by myself with my feet up and get, uh, getting a spot treatment. Giving them a check of a hundred and ten thousand, they'd be ecstatic. That's, I find that insulting for the work that they do. It's, uh, that was not an appropriate statement to make.
Okay. Uh, seems like the one-ten is the consensus. So. Okay. Anything else?
I have the final countdown screen for the budget process. We will have this to vote on some part of December eleven. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, I know for the comments, if you close the public hearing.
Okay. So. Yeah, okay. Public comment on agenda items only. We had a, a ton of comments on the budget for those that.
Irene Kelly and O four-one-one ha. I'm assuming the budget's part of the agenda items. Okay, I I just wanna say, I I I'd like to thank councilwomen Clunin and Rappa for defending and advocating for the full one hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars for the ambulance authority. Whatever the budget is, the budget is, I just want to say something to correct the record, and that is many people said they're going from zero funding to a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Well, that is technically accurate, but the reason why it's accurate is because town council has refused to fund the ambulance authority in years past when it was the town's responsibility to make it a, help make it a viable service. No one says it's all McCandless's issue. But I don't think that's what the budget numbers are saying either. I think the work that the ambulance authority has done, I think both in in cutting their budget and in trying to raise subscriptions. I think in what the other uh, town councils have um, voted for is all part of the big picture. But please stop saying it's going from zero to a hundred and ten thousand, like we're running in there like the white knight, you know, i- it's not the case. We just frankly haven't funded them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Ellen Wright, nine-six-three-five Old Community Road, Allison Park, PA one-five-one-zero-three. Um, I'm talking about the minutes, um, previous minutes. Um, my words are still not accurately being reported in the minutes. I've tried limiting what I say. I've tried handing out documents of what I say. And the minutes still do not reflect what I say. Um, I'm a little puzzled as to how I can be, what I'm saying can be accurately reported in the minutes. So I wanted to draw your attention to, um, when you pass minutes and it says what I say, it may not be what I've said. And um, that's a concern to me since I've taken the time, I have a concern about something and I'm sharing with you my concern and it's not being accurately reported. So thank you.
Thank you, straight. And any other public comments from those assembled here? See enough? Okay, next up, the November thirteenth meeting minutes were included in everyone's packet. Does anybody on council have any revisions?
I do, on page three. My name is R O P P A, so I'm O P A.
Okay. Anything else? Anything notice? Well, okay, go to Johnson for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as was submitted and amended this evening for the town of council minutes, November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
Okay. Second, Mary Ann, everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Any that's repished? Now reports of the committees. Mister Casey, can you go take us through the administration and finance?
Well, I'd be delighted to introduce you to Mr. Tricia Greathouse.
Good evening. Once again, council, you have the checklist in your packet. Does anyone have any questions?
Okay. Then I would like to move to approve checklist number ten dated October first, twenty twenty-three to October, October thirty-first, twenty twenty-three totaling one million four hundred and sixty thousand fifty-one dollars and three cents as submitted to each member of council and posted on the bulletin board and town website.
Second, Dr. Robb. Everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Carrie's?
Y'all have the financial dashboard for the month of, as of the month of October in your packet. Um, does anyone have any questions related to October's results? Um, just to make a general comment, we are wrapping up the year. We do have a lot of activity in November and December traditionally, including the accrual period. Um, I'm confident that we will meet budget um, in both cases at this point.
Good news.
No other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Communications report?
Communications report was in your packet. If you have any questions, please let me know and I'll let you off.
I do.
Okay.
What are we going to reach more constituents with our website?
With our website?
Or not with, I guess, uh, our town prior.
You mean our social media?
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, generally speaking, we handle organic reach. We do not do ads or anything like that. Um, not against that as a concept, but it's.
But how we capture the website? But how we capture the website, uh, or people's addresses so that we can make sure we're sending out the McMail to everybody. Could we, when we do maybe some communications, we ask people to please, uh, send us their emails or. Log in so we capture them. Cause I think it showed like four thousand people. It seemed very low to me.
Well, we have four thousand forty-eight subscribers to McMan. Um, I don't know if we've done anything in the last three to six months that really pushed that. Um, generally speaking, you pick up a lot when you first started. Uh, you pick up some scragglers as you go, but we could make that part of the regular social media.
Probably a lot of them dropped off too.
To, um, yeah, definitely. And, um. It, we've also probably captured some other people with the new website and sign and via that. Although it's mostly the same people, uh, if we match those lists up. But we can do more to try to encourage people to sign up for things.
Well, if we're gonna help the ambulance authority raise money, we need good addresses. We need to be able to communicate with these people, what our need is. So that's my ask.
Yep.
Thank you.
We will address it.
And one thing on communications too. Have we done anything to allow the public to fall in to these meetings?
For this not, now we, we've had some discussions about it, but have not figured out a solution that would get to that point yet.
Okay. I think it's important that we make that happen sooner rather than later. That people can participate in the meeting by, by phone. If we, if we don't want to do the video, I understand that, but by phone at least.
As information, uh, Jason and I, when we went to the ALUM conference. The attorneys came up and, and there's a whole lot of issues that can put you in harm's way. So we need to be working with our town attorney. To do it right, else we can cause more harm than benefit.
Okay. I still think we should keep pursuing it with the attorney or with whoever.
Junior council report. And Yuki. Or Carson.
They're both here.
Okay. Good evening all. So we'd like to start, um, by recognizing the twenty twenty-three election. Um. First, the school board election. We'd like to, um, congratulate Bob Gibbs and Anisha Shai for, um, their election victories. Along with Debbie Blackburn, Elizabeth Warner and Michael Winnaker. And we'd like to thank Marcy Pro and Shannon Eagle for their service to our, um, district and community. And for you all, um, we'd like to congratulate Doug Arlo, Nick Giorgetti and Joe Wall and Trish Clunin for their victories. And, um, unfortunately, we're gonna have to say bye to a couple of members, Mary and Eisenreich. Um, President Taral and Dr. Rappa, um, thank you all for your service. Uh, next we have the North Allegheny Police Force. Uh, nearly ninety-five percent of Nash students support. The idea of, um, the creation of the North Allegheny Police Force. Uh, boys varsity soccer, they ended their season with a very impressive, uh, seventeen wins and three losses and three ties. And finally, uh, first soon council, NAI Nash put on their annual, um, Thanksgiving food drive. And seventy-five percent of all donations that are, that go to, uh, the North Hills Community Outreach Program. Are from North Allegheny. And throughout all of Nash, we raised over two thousand dollars and donated over nine hundred cans of food. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, next I'd like to congratulate girls varsity soccer. Um, they had an amazing season with twenty-two, the two season and they went to state semifinals. Um, we'd like to also congratulate North Allegheny Girls Volleyball, which they won their seventh consecutive P A double A championship. And they have twelve state wins, which is the second highest in the state. Um, Nashville Musical had a successful performance of Little Shop of Horrors. And we'd also like to congratulate North Allegheny Football, which won their W P I L six eight championship against Central Catholic, which is their sixth so far. And Nash Walker Home is a small fundraiser for victims and survivors of domestic violence and human trafficking. And they were able to raise over one hundred dollars this month through the school. Through the school with prizes and candy. And thank you for that, sir. Good work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carson and Yuki.
Thank you.
Do I turn this over to town council? Is this?
Sure. Okay.
So there will be a public hearing held on ordinance reappropriating certain amounts of money within the general fund, street and water system fund. Capital projects and improvement funds on twenty twenty-three budgets on December eleventh, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. Liaison reports, Dr. Rappa.
Um, the N I D A did not have a meeting.
Okay. President Tarl, North Hills Council and Government.
Hills Cog did have a meeting. The meeting minutes are in your packet. If there's any questions.
Thank you. And public comment on administrative and finance committee items?
Hi, I'm Marsha Caliendo, um. One oh five two nine Abbey. I, I, a question or a comment relative to, it's a question, but I know you can't answer. Uh, the North Hills Council of Governments. Um, you know, one of the things that we've all talked about is consolidation. And I know we've talked about it from an, from an ambulance perspective, we've had some discussions. I, I, I would hope, and I, I don't know what actually the function is. I know you talk a lot about stormwater maintenance. But, you know, I think with public safety and the, um, ambulance and. We're starting to look at consolidation. I know somebody, you know, like putting their hands over their ears when they talk about it. But if we're truly talking about trying to defray cost. Consolidation is the way to go. So I, I would hope that maybe down the road, that is something I know. Mr. Charlie won't be there next, next year, but whomever goes. You know, let's, let's work together. Let's try to work out, um, cost saving measures. And if that means consolidating things like ambulance, things more like fire, you know, again. It will lower cost.
Okay, I'll turn it over to Ms. Eisberg.
Thank you. Reported planning and zoning committee, our planning director, RJ.
Good evening. Um, I just have a couple of developments that are working through the process right now. Nothing for all of you to vote on tonight. Um, not sure if we have any of them coming to the agenda in December's meeting yet. Uh, we're gonna be having the planning commission meeting next week. Um, to get the revisions for these two plans we have. So the first one. Uh, is the Schultz Lincoln Electric Vehicle Dealership. Uh, preliminary land development and lot consolidation plan. Uh, you all probably recall the rezoning request that we had. Right before the new code was finished up. Um, they did submit that land development application. Uh, month prior to us passing the new code. So that is our last application that is being reviewed. Um, under the old building code, not too much different. Honestly, their setbacks are actually greater in some locations, but other than that. Um, it's, it's pretty much the same. So, um, there are a couple of modification requests that, that they've put in. Um, one that the planning commission talked about in a little more detail was regarding grading. Uh, they just wanted to make one of the slopes. Uh, for the vehicle storage areas a bit steeper. Um, planning commission was feeling not too hot about that since it didn't seem to impede the function of the development. Um, but was a bit more of a preference perhaps. So we're waiting the developer's response on that and the revision is gonna see where that goes. Um, they do also have one other modification request to waive the requirement to construct a sidewalk on the very small portion of Einhaus Drive. That this property would have, but those are those two, you know, skinny parcels that, that we agreed to rezone earlier in the year. Um, they are proposing still to maintain sidewalk along Route nineteen. Um, and the planning commission seemed to feel a bit favorably towards that request because it really isn't serving. A function, um, and it would be difficult to access to maintain in the first place. So that's kind of where that conversation is going, but we'll see what happens at the meeting next week. Um, we also had an application in for what we're sort of calling phase two of the Walnut Court Town Home Development, although it's not much of a phase. It's really just a building. Um, so the developer that has already constructed the other town home units on that new street. Um. Right off of, I believe it's Dell Lane, uh, he acquired the property at the very end of, of that, uh, cul-de-sac. Which he was not previously able to do when he was originally coming in for the, you know, phase one, as it were. Um, so he has submitted an application to add one more building. Uh, right now, I think it's seven units that he's proposing. There were a significant amount of modification requests that came in with that, um, due to the developer requesting a hammerhead turnaround. Instead of, um, a cul-de-sac. There are some issues with our new Saldo side of the code subdivision and land development regulations. Um, where we actually have put a cap on how long you can have a dead end street without reaching an intersection, mostly for emergency vehicle concerns. You know, it, it, it's kind of generally accepted that somewhere in the eight hundred feet to thousand foot range, you don't really want to get too much further than that. Without having some sort of alternate access to the road. Um, and it appears that this potential, either cul-de-sac or hammerhead, whatever he ends up proposing ultimately. Uh, might be longer than that. So there, there are some different conversations going on with the road construction. Um, and again, just as a reminder, yes.
Question about that, isn't there a requirement so that fire trucks can turn in a cul-de-sac?
Uh, y- yes. So that's actually a really good question. I'm glad that you asked that. Um, if a developer does ever propose an alternate. Uh, option like a hammerhead turnaround or something, they have to provide turning templates for emergency vehicles. Um, we always make sure that the fire marshal takes a look at that as well as the engineers. And for this particular project, they did provide a successful. Um, turning template for the hammerhead that they're proposing.
Question with that, but like it takes one person parking where they shouldn't be. Just screw every template you've ever had in front of you.
That's, that's true. I mean, there's.
Is he gonna provide like, uh, a, a buildup of extra guest parking or something like that to. Because I know in a lot of these town home communities, that is a critical issue. One person has twenty people over on a Saturday night.
Right.
Guaranteed, there's people parking on the street, which would make this hammerhead completely unfunctional.
So I have a couple of thoughts on that. Not that anyone's raised that issue yet, but that's a, that's a good, and it depends on whether they do go ahead. You know, we're still proposing a hammerhead. Um, I think that that would still be potentially an issue even in a cul-de-sac. You know, just to, I, I haven't seen a turning template for that, but I mean, they're usually designed, assuming that. You're turning around in the thing without, um, other traffic in there. There are. Features that they could put on like striping it as a fire lane or something, you know, making it very visually obvious that nobody should be parking in it. Um, our code does require two off-street parking spaces per town home unit that has not changed from the prior code. Um, so whatever he would be proposing would have to still be in line with, you know, what, what the previous town home units were required to do. Um, I mean, there are definitely some more issues that the planning commission still wants to talk about. It, it's a bit of an ugly street. And so put just a hammerhead on, because there's already a cul-de-sac at the end of it. Um, and just with the number of modification requests and it's, it's an unusual site in terms of grading, there's some challenges. The fact that phase one was subdivided, assuming there would be no phase two, means that a lot of land. You know, on the side of one of the town homes that intuitively you'd be like, well, why can't you just move it a little closer to the other units? That's actually been sold and deeded to the owner of that end unit. Uh, yeah, quite, quite a nice yard. For, for a town home. So there are some challenges there. Um, I think there's an understanding that we don't want to make this piece of property impossible to develop, but at the same time, we're not beholden to grant. A large amount of modification requests just to do, you know, what maybe the ideal request was. Um, and just as a reminder, uh, for those of you who maybe were, you know, not here at the beginning of the code process. Or we haven't talked about modification versus variance. Variances are granted by the zoning hearing board. They are exceptions basically to the zoning side of the code. That's part thirteen in the new ordinances. Um, there is a burden of development hardship that must be proved by the applicant. And that is a separate process from modifications. Modification requests are what are in the subdivision and land development ordinance side. That's now part eleven in the new code. Um, deals more with sort of infrastructure, um, dimensions, you know, things like roads. How you could have lots and streets laid out, um, different things like that, that are a little more discretionary. If there's still a good result that you can get out of the code with an alternate approach, then the developer has the opportunity to present that and it is. Up to council, um, ultimately with the planning commission also having the opportunity to weigh in. Um, whether those are granted, they are not the same quasi judicial, uh, form as a zoning variance. So. Yeah, definitely some work to do on both of these plans. Um, we'll see what we get. It was a short. Duration in between the meetings, so the developers didn't have quite as much time to get the comments and then revisions back. Um, we do bump the week, the meeting out by. Um, one week in November, since we are closed as a polling place on election day, and that's normally when the. Um, planning commission meeting would fall. So we've only had a couple of weeks with Thanksgiving in the middle for them to get revisions in, but we'll see what we get. Um, at the meeting next week. So, sorry, it was a little longer than I meant to go, but I think that it was a good conversation. So I'm happy to answer any other questions if you have them.
Thank you.
Thank you, RJ. Liaison reports, planning commission, Mr. Singer.
RJ always steals all the thunder. So there's an awful lot to report. I will say this, your planning commission. Does a wonderful job when they look at these for both stormwater, grading, aesthetics, planning, traffic. All the points that you talked about today were all talked about in depth at the planning commission meeting. Um, the only other update I have is we will be interviewing, um. Board positions for planning commission here in the next two weeks. That's all I have to report.
Thank you, Mr. Singer. Zoning hearing board, Ms. Clunin.
Uh, there was no meeting this month and there will be a December meeting.
Thank you. Public comments on planning and zoning committee items.
Ellen Wright nine six three five Old County Road Allison Park PA one five one oh one. Um, I've heard multiple times that the code was passed with the idea of making changes. Who knew what these changes, uh, were to be when the code was passed? And now we've hired the person who worked on the code to clean up the code. I'm a little confused about this whole process. Um. And so where's the transparency? Um, what are all of the changes that need to be made to the code to clean it up? And without all of those on the table, then I would encourage of no vote on this change tonight. To encourage transparency so that all of the changes that need to be made to the code are out there. Not just the ones that we happen upon, but the ones that were known when the code was brought to council. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I'll turn it over to recreation committee, Mrs. Clunin.
Thank you. Uh, we will begin with the activities advisory committee and there was no meeting this month. And moving to the financial, finance development and promotional committee of the Heritage and Cultural Center, Ms. Eisberg.
Uh, there was a meeting this month on November, this period on November fifteenth. Uh, you do not have minutes in your packet. I, I'm not sure, uh, why, but, uh. I can recap a little. I did attend the meeting and you can jump in here, Trish, because you were at most of it. There was a new volunteer that came forward whose last name I can't remember, but her name is Wendy. She has Wendy Moore. She has an abundant amount of experience as a docent, uh, degrees in history. And she has stepped forward to volunteer to be the executive director of the Heritage Center, which I thought was very impressive. And, uh, we welcomed her. There are two members, uh, for the board that I'll bring forward at a later part of this agenda. And we had a lot to talk about with the, uh, gala. I don't know if I'm missing anything, Trish.
No, I, I'm looking forward to seeing what Ms. Moore will do at the center. She seems extremely well qualified for the position.
Yeah, me too. It was really a pleasure to meet her. So with that, um. That concludes my report.
Any public?
I'm sorry, any public comments?
Any public comments on recreation committee items? Okay. Any questions from council? Hearing none. Move on to town manager.
Uh, town manager report, uh, was, uh, sent to you guys today and it's on your desk here. Uh, do you have any questions? Please let me know. You had the engineer's report or I guess the engineer's report was in our packet. Kelly's here from Gateway, depending, buddy. Kelly, I will answer any questions you have on the engineer. Anyone? Alan Ferney.
As always, thank you all for having me here in, uh, sister for bed. Um, you have an attorney's report in your packet and I would ask that if you have any questions, please let me know and we can hold an executive session. After the meeting.
Uh, okay. All business. This basically we voted on this. So last, uh, last agenda, we had it on our whiteboard to put it on the November passage. Uh, unfortunately, the, uh. We're incorrect on that one, that the public, the actual advertising we had had a schedule for tonight. So, uh, we have to pass it tonight to make it official. Okay. When I made the motion last, I guess it doesn't matter.
I'll make a motion to adopt the identically identified ordinance, twenty-five four-two, an ordinance to the town council. The town of McCallis, Allegheny County, Pennsylvania, admitting the town code and ordinances. Part thirteen zoning ordinance has amended to revise section one three zero three point two three zero and table one three zero three point J temporary uses.
To add and amend regulations for certain temporary uses within the town.
Second.
Second, Ms. Clunin. Everyone in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? And Carrie's yet again. Okay, new business, this is just a number, but you can approve the forty seven.
Yes, this purchase order and expenses above my approved. Amount, and so council needs to prove it. This is a storm sewer pipelining project, Department of Public Works, that they would like to finish by the end of the year.
And this was in the budget, and this is what was budgeted for that.
Yes, there's nothing over budget, just over my signing ability.
Is it in the budget for this year or for next year?
For this year.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of storm sewer pipe lining for the Department of Public Works. At a cost of forty seven thousand six hundred and seventy dollars from Guyer Brothers, Inc., through CoStar's contract number three zero one four five six.
Second. Second, Mr. Casey, everyone in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Next up, we have an activities committee. We're going to vote to make it an ad hoc activities committee since we now have a employee that handles activities.
Since we have hired a part time parks and rec person and also the advisory committee that we've, the activities advisory committee that we had in place. Four members' terms expired and did not reapply. We did not get any other applications. So after some discussions with council members individually, similar to what we did with our tech committee. We'd like to continue the three people that are on the advisory, the activities advisory committee and an ad hoc. Concept where Angela Parks and Rec Director would be able to call on them to continue to use their services for some things they do help with that we still have planned.
And any new members for that ad hoc committee would come in front of council?
Not at this time, because we have three that are already.
In the future.
In the future, we would still make appointments via the council per the charter.
Any other questions for Brian?
I was gonna say I'll make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to adopt attentively identified resolution number twenty one of twenty twenty three repealing town of McCannus resolution. Number twenty of twenty nineteen and reestablishing an activities advisory committee to towns council.
Second, Dr. Rappa, everyone in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Next up, Mary Ann.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Suzanne Schrupp and Robert Polkowski. To the Financial Development and Promotional Committee for the Heritage and Cultural Center for a term to end twelve thirty one twenty seven.
Your second.
Second.
Second, Trish. Okay. Everyone in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? And I will abstain. Did say anything else? By saying else. One of them is a relative.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, one of them is a relative. Yes, so I abstain. Okay, wrapping things up, any public comments on non-agenda items? Seeing none, okay. Thanks, everybody, for the robust but respectful discussion. We're adjourned. Yay.